Okay. Allison Silverstein?
Here.
Melissa Dyser, Melanie Dyser?
Here.
Jada Roman?
Here.
Brian Fleischer?
Here.
Holly Shaw? Eric Scherzer? Yvonne Buchnight? Monk Inyang? She's still online. Yeah, okay. It's Wednesday, August 20th, 2025, at 8:27. The purpose of this meeting is for the Board of Education to take action on the resolutions as indicated on the agenda. Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of this meeting has been approved in the following manner. On Thursday, July 10th, 2025, notice of this meeting was posted on the Montclair Board of Education's public website, www.montclair.k12.nja.us, and filed with the township clerk. The date, time, and location of the meeting were accurately set forth therein. On Monday, August 11th, 2025, notice of this meeting was posted in the Herald News and Bergen Record. The date, time, and location of the meeting were accurately set forth therein. Please be advised that this meeting is considered a public meeting under the law and may be taped, broadcast, used, or reproduced in ways and in mediums beyond the control of the Board of Education. Individual statements and opinions expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily represent the Montclair Board of Education. Please keep in mind that if you directly disclose personally identifiable information or personally sensitive data regarding yourself or others during the public meeting, this information may be collected and used by others. Accordingly, the Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility and will not be liable for any comments made by the members of the public. Speakers should therefore carefully evaluate their statements for individual consequences under the law and should obtain any appropriate professional advice prior to speaking. For those who wish to speak during public comment, please be sure to sign up on the sheet that is located at the back podium. The sheet will be collected at the end of community partners' comments. Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Oh, sorry. Please stand. To the flag, the United States of America. To the republic which it stands, one nation, under indivisible liberty and justice for all. Superintendent Report?
Yeah.
Huh? I'm going to introduce them. Good afternoon. At this time, as part of the superintendent report, I'd like to welcome our partners from Legacy to come and share with us updates on our bond referendum. So I'd like to introduce Connor and William.
Good evening. Hope everyone's enjoyed their summer. I've not seen you guys since May. I think it was my last presentation, so a lot of information to give an update on, but I'll try to keep it quick and allow for any questions to go through. Thank you, Mrs. Turner, and welcome to the Montclair School District formerly at this presentation, as well as Business Administrator, Mrs. Sullivan. So I'm going to quickly get into it, and I want to make sure that part of the presentation, you'll see some changes, and part of that is I want to make sure the public is aware of the different parties involved with the referendum. So I did create some slides to show that. So if you want to go to the first slide there. So we have multiple consultants that are involved with the referendum, starting with the architect, Brett Samson Architects, Will Rosses behind me here. They're the Architect of Record. They were here at the beginning and helped get the referendum to the point of going out to the public for the vote, and now are here through the project doing the design and working alongside other consultants through the projects to ensure everything is done in accordance with the documents. They are the ones that design the development. They make sure the packages going out are in accordance with the public bidding, and then throughout the multiple stages, they'll work closely with the stakeholders as well as the district to ensure that everything is being met to their needs, and they ensure that the projects are aligned with what the referendum was approved for. So they are through, and that's the architect. The next slide, please. So also involved, very involved in the district, is Detail Associates. They've been the district's environmental consultant prior to the referendum, and they are heavily involved with the referendum. These are very old buildings, and we do come across from time to time environmental issues that we need to consult with them. They are part of the project before it even goes out to bid, to ensure the areas that we are going to disturb are tested and confirmed so we can properly plan for that. We do have some active projects right now that are dealing with some environmental issues that we did know going into the project and some that we discovered during the construction. We ensure that that method is done in accordance with the state laws. They oversee everything that happens to make sure that all testing and all clearances are done prior to any student, staff, or other workers go into that area to make sure everything is done in the proper manner. We also work alongside the township to make sure that all permits are pulled and they have approvals and know also what is happening. Next slide. And then I just put this in here. I have done plenty of presentations, but also part of the project is Legacy Construction Management. We're the construction management firm, serving as the owner's rep. We are basically your eyes and ears in the district throughout the referendum. I have some of the Legacy team here as well that's been part of the project, but also have ramped up during the summer since we have more projects going on. So one of them is not here tonight. I was approved his vacation for some reason, and he's able to go on vacation. So he's not here, but Justin has been very involved with the project as well. But we ensure alongside PSA that we stay on budget, which I'll give you a slide at the end of this to show where we currently are financially. We push to maintain the schedules. There's a lot unforeseen that do come up. We make those adjustments and coordinate with the school, with the teachers, meetings with principals, to again ensure everything is done right, and we're here to protect the district and make sure that the community gets the best value for the project. So that's some of the team. There's a lot of other people involved with these projects. Tyreek Hunter and Robert Kelly have been instrumental throughout this process to be able to work with their staff going into the schools during the summer. We take over as much as we can while we have the opportunity, and they're tasked with getting the schools back before it starts. And it's a daunting task, and he's done very well with the communication and coordination with us, so I do also want to give Tyreek and his team credit as well. So those are some of the team members and consultants on there. You can go to the next slide. So this is the updated schedule. Again, this is a graphic that I put together. I did include this time the descriptions of all the colors, as my last report cut that off, so this should be helpful for everyone to understand a little bit more where we're at with it. What I also did is show the 12-month carry-through, so from August all the way through July of 2026, where we currently are with projects, which ones are in what stage. Green is design, bidding phase is the blue, red is the anticipated award, procurement that's going through submittals, RFIs, and getting all the material ready, yellow is the construction phase, and the gray is the close-out phase. So I believe this will be, I believe the presentation will be put up on the public's website, so this is something more that people can look into. I have no problem answering questions from the board after the presentation to go into more detail, but there's a couple of slides with a lot of updates for the scheduling. So if you can just go through the next two slides. You can go one more, it's fine. We'll go into the projects now. Again, since it's been a little bit since I've been here, just go through some of the projects. So Arby Lewis's Sports Complex, the baseball field's 100% complete alongside the track improvements that were done for the track and fields. That project is closed out. So next slide.
Do you want to wait for questions till the end? Okay.
Hillside Roof Replacement. This has been on this updates for a long time. I will say we finally made it to manufacturer's punch list, and just after the holiday, PSA alongside Legacy, we will do our punch list and finally close this project out hopefully by year end. That's Hillside Roof Replacement. That started last summer.
Connor, can you just, for the public, just so we're understanding, explain what a punch list is?
Sure. So a punch list is, we will review the job to make sure any minor items such as on a roof project, if what we call fish mouth, which is a dimple or bump on the roof system that is getting addressed and patched. These projects, especially for roof, come with a 30-year edge-to-edge warranty, so we just go through if there's something scratched on a new metal that was installed. You know, it's brand new. We want to make sure that you guys are getting the brand-new system and what you paid for. If it's on interior project, if the painting is, you know, not properly coated, we'll have them repaint the wall, doors dented, fixed, stuff like that. It's minor corrections that we would see through the construction. Major stuff throughout the job, that's what Legacy and PSA, we have weekly, if not bi-weekly meetings, we're walking the job and we're pointing out things throughout the process. But this is a normal process to go through, make sure everything that we want before we release the final payment is taken care of and resolved. So the Administration Building and the pre-K, that was a roof project as well as a cupola replacement on the pre-K, trim replacement, trim painting, as well as gutters. That, obviously, we had to shut down the pre-K for the summer, which I know is an inconvenience, and we are working through that. We unfortunately discovered through the construction process that the lead, there's lead on the trim, which I don't think is an overall surprise for our oldest district, some of these buildings, but it's something we did come across. It is actively being treated along with the consultant and the contractor. That should be done at the pre-K end of mid to next week, and then Administration Building, the following week, we're focusing on the pre-K. Obviously, for reasons, we want to make sure that that's safe for when people come back. So that's what we're working on right now. You go to the next slide. Hillside Gym. That is a project we started just before school got out so we can ensure that it was done in time, that was coordinated with Principal Oscevedo to allow us access second shift. That is scheduled to be ready to be opened in time for start of school. Final inspections are next week. Punch list will follow shortly after that. The bleachers for that area will be the only major item that will be installed the first week of school. They'll be coordinated, but it will not prevent any use. It looks really great in there. I think people will be very pleasant when they finally get a chance to go in there. And yeah, that's where we're currently at with that project. Hillside Auditorium, right next to the gym. That project started this summer. That goes through substantial completion, is projected to be the first week of January. That is through the demo. They're starting to do rough electric and some mechanical work. A lot of us wish we can kind of keep what we found underneath the walls. Exposed a lot of the old brick and everything, but we will make that into a very state-of-the-art auditorium in a couple of months. So that's a long way to go, but it is in the process. We are in this week going to be making sure that teachers come back on Tuesday. Everything's cleaned up, they have their access. We do need to access the auditorium through active hallways. They'll be coordinated to be done safely during the school day, and the staging and area will be make sure that there's no impact to parking lot and that there's no impact to the students safely getting in and around the school. Mishway and Interior Renovations. This project is a two-year-long project. It is an HVAC upgrade with interior renovations throughout the entire school. We're touching majority of the areas. Currently, we are working on known abatement work that needed to get done. These are just pictures of the setup that they have to do. They're working alongside the environmental consultant to ensure everything is set up and done properly. There's coordination with Tyreek and the custodial staff to make sure everything has been isolated in the room so that they can work in the certain areas. This is for the purpose that we have to bring a lot of mechanical lines and electrical lines for the updates, so we need to drill quite a few holes, several hundred holes throughout the school to make sure that everything can get where it needs to. That's where we're currently working so that during the school year, they can work without having to do any abatement. If there is anything that comes across from a need for an abatement, that can only be done on weekends when nobody's in the building or during the holiday breaks. So no abatement will be done during the school week when people are there. District-wide Boiler Replacement. This is at several schools that were identified during the referendum that had a need for boilers. Many of the schools are down to one boiler. Next Tuesday, we will have every boiler, every school that was getting a boiler replacement will have at least one brand-new boiler up and running or ready to run. So I know there was concerns at the last meeting, how are we going to ensure that everything got done? So we're going to have the one done. Once that's in place and running, they'll work on the next one so that the schools will never be without potential heat for the October 15th start. So that's progressing very well. That's what one contractor doing, multiple boilers throughout the school district. Can go through the next slides. There's just some pictures of boilers, nothing too exciting. Bradford Roof Replacement. Again, it's a project that started last summer, just a very small amount of roof. As of this morning's job meeting for several roof projects with this contractor, we are scheduled for a punch list the week after the holiday. So finally made it to the point of punch list, and we can remove this project from the list, and hopefully the next update will be that it's complete and went to the close-out phase. So this was just a metal roof over the library media center there. Next slide. Northeast Roof Replacement. This is 100% complete, closed out. It was done by the same roofer, but we were able to get this one done, so it's just an update. We are closed out of this one. Glenfield Roof Replacement. This was done by just a separate roofing contractor in a different contract. This was completed last summer, and we worked through some close-out stuff, but this is 100% closed out. This was a parcel roof replacement at Glenfield, not the entire roof. District-wide Playground Replacement. This was also a summer project, but through some discoveries with some playgrounds, we isolated some of the playgrounds to be delayed so we didn't close down all playgrounds through the school year. This was being worked on. The architect was out there today confirming punch list. We are reviewing the work that needed to be done. There's no issue or stopping any use of the playgrounds start of school, and we're going to be moving into close-out phase and confirming if there's any additional work that needs to be done. District-wide Site Drainage. We are just, we have the final payment application that just got sent in, and this will be closed out. I actually saw it today. I believe there was some sports teams playing on the hillside soccer field, so they're actively using that for soccer, it looks like now. Next one. Stair Replacement at Pre-K and Edgemont. This has been closed out. This will be removed from the slides, as this has been done for some time now. Grandstand and Press Back Replacement. Contractors, they are continuing working on the inmensant coating system, and for simpler terms, that's the fireproofing underneath the bleachers. We are close to the New Jersey Transit and the property lines, so there's a requirement to make sure that it has a specific fire rating, and they are looking to finish that, weather pending. Next week, we should have the certification that the fire rating is met. We will then finish, they poured some concrete this week, and they will do the bleacher ramp. Should be working on that tomorrow and Friday. I've been in communication with the township for our finals, final inspections. This will be ready for the start of football season and public use in the near future. Glenfield Curtain Wall Replacement. This is substantially complete. They're working through some punch list items. This is a drastic change from what originally was there. I wish we had similar stuff to look at here in this space, but that will be coming in due time, and upcoming milestones just to close out and finalize the punch list. Glenfield Media Center. These pictures, a little bit more updated than they show there. We're into a final completion, and we're looking for final inspections from the township next week, and that'll be ready for a start of school. No issues with use of that for start of school from the construction part. High School Auditorium. That project has started. Some of these pictures, as you can see, the seats have been removed. As of today, when I walked through there, all the seats have been, you know, completely demoed. There's a stage there. They're starting to work on some additional demo work below and above, and we're looking to also get some known abatement work done prior to kids getting in there. Again, same setup. They won't be able to do that during the school day. They'll do weekends or on breaks. This area is completely isolated from the use of the school when they start. We have partition walls ups, and we're going to fence out in front, so it will not be accessible or any interaction with students. They'll have their own contractor entrance, and that's been set up, and we've had meetings with Principal Freeman, as well as Tyreek and the contractors to ensure everything is set up properly. This is also projected not to be complete until early January. Buzz Aldrin and George Innis, we had stair replacements, removed several sets of stairs in the landings. We are in the current final inspections. We're actually today from the third party to ensure all the steel was done properly, and we have all the weldings. They had to make some corrections. We had final town inspections. They're working on painting. They can actually be used right now without any issue. They'll be ready and no issue with the use of school. I've met with Principal Major, and he had some activities there, and he was able to safely work around that without having any impact on his setup for the start of the school year. High School and George Innis Curtain Wall. The meeting in May, I opened my mouth and said, next time we be here, this would be all completed and look nice. As you can see, it doesn't look nice, and nothing has started. So unfortunately, we did get caught in a procurement issue with getting the material, with everything that's happening, with some material issues with tariffs, so we are waiting for some final material to come in. We are coordinating to be able to do this on breaks or on weekends. That's unfortunately, it's at our hands and just something that does happen in this industry from time to time. We did also not allow them to do the high school curtain wall because they were missing some components. We didn't feel comfortable that they would start removing areas that were part of the egress without being able to ensure it would be properly put back together. So very similar to the playgrounds where it happened before, we strategically are delaying it to make sure that everything gets done properly. So I'll have an update at the next meeting when, if we have everything. I think that slide is a mess-up on a slide there. You can skip that one. And I think that's the lettering somehow, the font. What that was, was there's two projects on for recommendation tonight. That is the high school HVAC as well as the buzz boiler replacement. So they are recommended by the architect and Legacy to be on for award. The potential upcoming projects. So this is a list I put out there for, based on the scheduling alongside Brett Samson, what current projects we are looking to get out. Buzz Aldrin, it leaves on for rejection tonight. That will be out, going out for a rebid in September. Fortunately, we still have not been able to get that in the area we need to for the budget, so we're working through that. Glenfield Interior and HVAC Renovations. That is one of the biggest projects we'll be taking on in the district. That's anticipated to be out to bid in fall of 2025. We've already met with the previous administration that was over there, as well as the new principal, to ensure everything is aligned and that everything has been signed off. Hillside HVAC and Interior Renovations. We had our initial meeting with Principal Oscevedo. We have upcoming meetings soon, and that's anticipated to be out to bid December 2025 or sometime before February of 2026, so upcoming winter. Bradford HVAC Interior Renovations. We've also met with Principal Frank over there as well, and we are looking to go out to bid in same timeframe in the winter. Buzz Science Room Renovations. We still have additional meetings to have with that. Anticipate to be out to bid in winter of 2026. And also Edgemont Interior Renovations and HVAC, same timeframe, out to bid in winter of 2026. So we have several additional projects, interior projects, that will take some time to get through, but we are working through the bigger projects right now through design. And next slide. So I did want to give a general overview, kind of a 30,000-foot view of the referendum and the financials with the current projects. So I just put this together with the information that we have. So the referendum was $187 million referendum. The construction budget, which is inside that, is about $145 million, and there's contingencies, which is built in for unknowns and for stuff that we come across during construction, bringing, you know, that to approximately $166 million. And then there's soft costs, and the soft costs, that covers everything from permits to Legacy's fee, to Brett Samson's fee, to attorney's fees and other soft costs that are involved with the project. So to give the general public an idea of where the funds are, and then just with related to the construction, this is what we are currently working through right now. So the original contracts are about $49 million. Change orders to date, we had a bigger change order that was approved through the board, which is when the Hillside Playground, when we found the unsuitable soils underneath. That's why I see change orders to date. That is more or less that project. Contracts to date, $49 million, 661. And the construction budget for these projects specifically is approximately almost $52 million, and we are currently with all these projects approximately $2.2 million under budget for those projects. Until we close out those projects, and if we were to take the projects we currently have now in the close-out, those amounts will change even without change orders. So we have built-in allowances into the project. We don't use those, we get those back. So that would reduce that and increase the budget that we have. So as we go through these projects, unfortunately, cost is increasing as it always does year over year, and the tariffs, it's every dollar that we can save through the projects is very important to help make sure the rest of the projects can go through. So this approximation of the remaining construction budget for the entire referendum is about $113 million. And again, these will change on a regular basis as we close out projects. So and again, with those numbers, we're approximately 32% through the construction portion of the referendum, just to give everyone a little bit of snapshot where we currently are as we've been working on this for over two years now. So that's the general update I have, if there's any questions.
Connor, let's start with this chart right here. I don't see where the $113 million comes from because it's not, I would expect it to be 187 minus either 49 million or 51 million, but it's neither of those two.
I was based then on the construction budget plus the contingencies minus the contracts to date, I believe that's what.
Sorry?
The formula, this is off an Excel, so I don't have my computer in front of me to click the formula.
Roughly.
But I believe what I did was I calculated the construction budget plus the contingencies, and then minus the contracts to date.
Okay.
But again, I'm trying to do the math in my head here, but I can verify that for you with the formula, how I got there. That's not a problem.
That might make sense. Let me one follow-up on that. So far, the contingencies to date are the 334,000. Those that.
Change orders.
Those are the change orders. What other contingencies have there been in the existing projects?
So again, so contingency is to count for, there's a percentage, so a lot of renovation will have a 10%. So like, again, so contingency is to account for, if there's a percentage, so a lot of renovation will have a 10% say contingency for construction project, right? So if it's a million dollars, maybe it's a hundred thousand, there's a formula that's done, that was generated to get to $187 million of the referendum. So when we award a project, that also hovers for escalation. So in the, when 2022, when this went out for referendum, all these numbers were set, there's a binder that that tells us what it is. So including that is escalation, it's included for us for when we come across change orders. So then we build in allowances into the contract, so as we do come across, change orders aren't foreseen, we review them, we vet them out, and then we apply that to the allowance. The idea is to not exceed the allowance, so we actually get money back from the contract. So that's, that's, all that $21 million is just to to show there's contingencies that we put into the job. Hopefully, we're not going to spend $21 million.
I, I understand that, but to date, what this chart shows us is the original contracts of the awarded contracts of 49 million had change orders of 334 and that's 49, six, 61. There are no other contingencies leading to those projects, the contingencies will be for things in the future.
So, so right now, so the original contracts, again, shown around approximately 49, three, right? And contracts to date, you can see there's a, there's the the difference there. So as we close out projects, the contracts to date, if I close out a project tomorrow and it has $100,000 that's unused, that will change, contracts to date will go 49, five, six, one, because I'll take back $100,000 from that contract. It'll reduce that, it won't change the change orders to date. Change orders to date is above and beyond the worded contract.
Right.
But if I come across a, what we call a potential change order, right, if we're doing this job in here and it's, I gotta replace ceiling tiles in here, plus $5,000, you won't see that on the change orders to date, it's not, it's not a change to above and beyond.
Okay.
That goes against the, that goes against the contingencies built in.
All I'm pointing out is that the contingency is a, is a big number and we haven't spent much of it yet.
We have, we've only exceeded over so far above the contingencies 334,000.
Okay.
And I don't have the exact figure, but 99% of that was for Hillside's playground issue.
Okay, fine. How much of the soft costs have been spent so far?
I am actively working on that, Mrs. Sullivan got into district. We have a lot of other stuff to, you know, she has to get her wrapped up with, so I have to work with her to, to get all those numbers. I'm privy to Legacy's number, I'm not privy to Brett Samjin's, I'm not privy to a lot of other consultants that are part of that. So that's something that we're, we're working on to, to be able to provide that.
It would be helpful to have that.
Yes, on our future, many to do list is coming.
Okay.
Allison?
I had a question about the, the curtain wall project, I know the other projects you had mentioned this, but not with this one. I know you said you're purposefully delaying it, just to confirm though, is it going to be the actual construction now planned to be at a point in time where school is, is not in session? Or how are you going to work with that? Because obviously over the summer, no one was here, it would have been great, but it didn't happen. So how are we going to plan to make sure that cafeteria service is not interrupted here in this building?
So if you guys recall the Glenfield Curtain Wall, we actually did that during the school year. So we did that last spring, we started that. So it can be done during the school year, but there's a lot of coordination that needs to be done because of the space. So most likely, they will try to take advantage, whether it's over a long four day weekend, something like that, and they'll get as much done, but it wouldn't have impact this space during the school day. So if they worked at night and they worked on a portion, they have to clean it up, it has to be ready the next day.
Great, thank you.
So question, when we said that the, that this curtain wall project in this space was delayed due to problems with tariffs. So my understanding is that when you bid on the project, you are either anticipating tariffs or not anticipating tariffs, but whatever you bid on the project, that material cost is then your risk as a general contractor, not our risk as a school district. And they shouldn't be able to say, we're not moving forward because of tariffs, right?
So let me, let me rephrase that when I reference the tariffs. So when I was generally referring that is that there's still procurement issue because of everything happening of getting the material. We're not, we have not been hit with any cost increases for the tariffs. And this whole situation with the tariffs, it's a very uncharted situation that we're all dealing with, especially in the construction side. So as of right now, we have not seen to date any contractor try to get tariff increases. But I will tell you that is something that is actively happening in this state on several other public jobs and it's something we're dealing with on a regular basis. So that's evolving, that's be something when, if it happens, I will make sure it gets consulted with the attorney because it's uncharted territory.
And then on the Montclair High School HVAC that we're looking to award, I know we had rejected that before. What is the current low bid that we're awarding today, how does that compare against our construction budget?
So we did not actually reject that before, we actually pulled that bid. Because of what we were seeing with Buzz at the time with the overbid. As far as the, we're aligned with the budget, don't know if it's proper for me to answer that question if we haven't technically awarded that yet. I don't know if I can answer where that aligns with that, I'm not sure if Dana is, is that okay to, okay. So the base bid, with the basement and alternates, we're, we're actually below budget. The exact figure, I think it's approximately.
Well, the offhand, it's like between.
Yeah, one and a half million dollars. I don't have that figure in front of me, I can give you the exact for sure. So that's with all the, the alternates, the next bid for the base bid was over budget.
Can I follow up on that, Brian?
Yeah.
That one bid is way lower than the other three bids. Is that concerning? Because they are, that bid that we're proposing, you proposed to, we're proposing to vote on tonight is 65% or something like that of the average of the other three bids. That same contractor bid on the.
The Buzz.
And their.
Their way high.
Their bid was high.
Correct.
So I, it just strikes me is whether or not something is being missed here, that they are misinterpreting something or we're going to run into problems later on by awarding the low bid, which is what the recommendation is. Because it's so. Either the other bits are ridiculously high or their bid is, you know, out of whack in some way, it's concerning.
It's concerning. We had the same concern when we, when it was opened. That is, the bid spread is, was very wide, right, from the top was over 30 and then the low was 17 for the base bid, that's a very big spread. And we had that concern, in the public bidding world that we are in, the contractor has every right to pull that bid. They did not. So if there was a concern on their end, they had every opportunity to do that. And a lot of times we will see that if they, what we call is they left a lot on the table, right, that between the next bid. Because if we were to reject that bid, more likely that bid then goes from 17 base bid up to around the 22, right? And they're going to fight for that, that last little spot there. So they have not indicated whatsoever that they wanted to pull a bid, they have plenty of time to do that. So that's why we have it on for a recommendation, because it fits within the budget. You guys are getting a lot for, for that amount, plus the alternates. And in this public contracting, whether we award somebody in under budget or over budget, we still have the same things that happen throughout it and same discussions about change orders and all this stuff that happens in construction. So I don't, we have worked with this contractor, Legacy has worked with this contractor, I believe Brett Samjin has worked with this contractor. We've had very successful jobs with them, so I, I, I get the concern, we had it too.
Connor, didn't you guys reach out, one of you reached out to the contractor, didn't you?
Yeah, we generally make sure that there was not something missed. And, you know, we did get verification that they're comfortable with it. And that's why we're, we put it on for a recommendation, so. That's our job to, to have to deal with that potential of them making up the difference for what we kind of referenced. That's our job to make sure that if it's fair and it's something that was needed, then, you know, we'll have to pay for that through a change order. But if it's not, and we don't pay somebody just because they want to make an additional couple of dollars. That's why we're here to protect you guys.
You know, we've struggled to successfully award these big HVAC projects. So the fact that we're able to award one and that they're not walking away from their bid and the numbers just keep getting higher the longer we wait, I think we got to move forward, I mean.
My only concern is we don't run into problems later on down the road because their bid seems so low.
It's the, the problems that I think you're concerned with are, we're always going to have the general problems that come with the construction. Whether it's 17 million, 22 million, it's not going to change that, because the drawings will be the same. So if it went to the next bidder and he sees something that's in the drawing, he's, would go after it as well, right? So we have a buffer, we have quite a bit of a buffer to deal with some of these problems that could.
We don't have a legal basis to.
Correct, they're the lowest responsible bidder. So.
Thank you, Connor, oh, I'm sorry.
Really quick, can, we can guarantee 100% that the Montclair Community Pre-K community will be able to get in the first day of school, yeah?
Yes, they believe they're also following the schedule that is with the rest of the school district, because I know they always wanted to be in there even during summer. So I believe that's my understanding, and yes, I mean, they can go in there now, but we want to make sure all the, you know, there's lead paint and it's, we're making sure anything loose is resolved before they come in there. Yep.
I just, sorry, I'm going to ask about the.
The Woodman, the backstop, the last time we talked, you guys were looking into solutions to making it a little bit safer.
My understanding, and no disrespect, but I believe there's some issues going on with that or that are above me and I believe there's some still stuff going on with a potential lawsuit, I believe. So I don't think it's appropriate to me to answer that. And then I'll, I don't know if the attorney's here, but I don't think it's appropriate for me to discuss that stuff right now.
Yeah, that's okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I have one other question, someone brought up, neighbors have been emailing about the, like a smell that was on the field, on the turf. I'm just, so I'm, this is why I'm bringing it up to you. And they had said, you know, is there something like potentially, like it could be like bacteria from like drainage situation? Is that something that should be looked at? I'm sure it's under warranty if that is the case, but is that something you've ever dealt with before? Well, we've gotten a few emails, so I thought, since you're here, we should ask.
I do not have an, an update regarding an, an issue with that. I don't know if the architect has any further information with that, but I don't, I, nothing has been.
Someone's brought up before, or?
I have not had an issue in a turf field, I'm not sure exactly the details that are being referenced, so I can't answer. I have not heard of an issue on a field that we replaced with a bacteria issue.
Okay.
So.
On the, the other award that we're talking with that's on the agenda tonight is the boiler at.
Buzz.
At Buzz. That work is slated to, by your chart, be done over the winter.
So that, that follows the same schedule as the other boilers, we kept it the same. We left, you know, time in there, so we weren't paying for an accelerator to try to hit October 15th, knowing it was very tough to replace two boilers and we can only do one at a time. So that's substantially completed to be March 2026 per the contract. As we're progressing through these boilers, they're going to do same thing, different contractor, they'll go in, they'll replace the one boiler that's currently not even operable, replace that, and then we'll allow them to go into the next one. So kind of more of a conservative schedule there to allow that, so I don't over promise and under deliver like this room here.
So when your, and your expectation is we will have one new boiler in every school? I think that's what you said in your report, starting the winter season.
Yeah. And that's for the, the schools that were doing the project, not every school.
Right, the schools that have questionable boilers.
Correct, just to make sure, yeah, everyone's not thinking that's the whole district got new boilers.
And then la- last thing, the Glenfield roof is done, was, the cupola was, was or wasn't part of that project?
The cupola was not part of that project, that was a project, I believe, that was previous to the referendum, correct? Will can answer that one.
Is that done?
Evening, everybody. The Cupola Restoration Project there was part of the 2021 Districtwide Masonry Restoration Work. It was strategically put on hold last summer because we didn't want to take down the front of the building and it was postponed to this summer. The work is ongoing, there was a slight delay in getting them started this year. They've been out there for the last week or so pretty consistently. They're about done with the paint removal, tomorrow they should be done, it was supposed to be today, but they got rained out. So tomorrow they'll be done with paint removal, they're going to move directly into repainting it and work through the weekend and they should be substantially complete. Roughly middle of next week and we're, we're keeping on top of them, but we're, we're at a good spot.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that, we're going to welcome David Nash to provide our annual training for harassment, intimidation and bullying.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, great to have a chance to be with all of you to talk about, you know, some very important issues around harassment, intimidation and bullying, New Jersey law and looking at some key protocols to consider as a school district as you're addressing these important issues. So again, my name is David Nash, I'm the Director of the Legal One Program. It is a program that provides school law training for administrators, teachers, counselors, boards of education, really all of the key stakeholders involved in our schools, dealing with a wide range of legal issues. And it was a pleasure for me to have the opportunity to work with your wonderful administrative team to talk through a number of important issues regarding our state law on harassment, intimidation and bullying. So all of you have access to this PowerPoint and we'll walk through some key points to highlight some of the work that we have been doing and talk about some key considerations moving forward. Next slide. Whenever I'm doing a presentation, I, I am an attorney, but I'm not here as your attorney, I'm here providing information to you. Of course, you have a wonderful school attorney, we're giving you important legal information and I'm happy to answer questions that you might have. If you do have questions about particular issues around harassment, intimidation or bullying, I will assume you're asking me a hypothetical as opposed to asking for legal advice on any particular matter. But with that, very happy to, you know, engage in any discussion around these issues. Next slide. And all of you, I believe, have access to this PowerPoint, here's a QR code as well, another way for you to access the material and we'll go to the next slide. So I did think it would be important as part of this discussion to highlight some key aspects of New Jersey's HIV definition and some related legal considerations. Probably each one of us, if we were asked to individually define what would we mean by the word bully, we'd have our own variation on that theme and exactly what that means. New Jersey's definition is quite specific, so we're going to walk through just a few important considerations, which I think are a real good foundation for our discussion. Next slide. So of course, New Jersey law has multiple components that we have to keep in mind when we are considering whether there is an issue of harassment, intimidation or bullying. Keep in mind, and I think most people sort of recognize this now, but issues could arise on or off school grounds. Very important to understand that, oftentimes, issues arise on social media, issues could arise at home, on the weekend. Oftentimes, those issues might also take place directly in school or on school grounds, but that is not a requirement in our state law. One of the requirements built into our state law for something to be, be defined as bullying is that there be a distinguishing characteristic. Of course, New Jersey does list in our state law a long list of potential distinguishing characteristics that might be the reason that one student targets another student, including race, ethnicity, gender, religion, disability, sexual orientation. However, New Jersey also, at the end of that definition, says, or any other actual or perceived characteristic. It is important to keep in mind that under New Jersey law, we are looking through the eyes of the alleged victim when we ask that question about whether someone was targeted because of a perceived. because of a perceived characteristic. So what did that student perceive as the reason that another made comments or took actions that were harmful to that student? And is that a reasonable perception? So that is a key part of our definition. Another key part of the definition is the requirement that there be substantial disruption with the orderly operation of the schools or interference with the rights of students as a result of alleged harassment, intimidation, or bullying. So really, what we're looking for is some lasting impact, some change from that student's baseline behavior. Is that student impacted in a way beyond a momentary annoyance? And that could take many different forms. Sometimes it's dramatic. A student is fearful of coming to school. That could be the impact. Other times, it's more subtle. A student who was very friendly and outgoing now is very withdrawn. That student is more isolated than they were before. So the substantial disruption is really looking at some identifiable change from that student's baseline behavior. And of course, as part of the investigation into a potential harassment, intimidation, or bullying incident, New Jersey does require that there be a specific harm that can be documented to a student. Oftentimes, that may be emotional harm. Sometimes it is physical harm. It could be a threat, fear of harm. It could be something that was demeaning to that student or a group the student's part of. It could be something that creates a hostile educational environment where it's difficult for the student to function in school. One piece that often does surprise folks talking about this law, there's no need to prove that one student, or it could be a staff member, that one person, student or staff member, intended to harm a student. So intent is not a part of New Jersey law. Really what we're asking is, should this person, student or staff member, have known that what they were saying or doing would cause harm? Did it cause harm? Was there a distinguishing characteristic? Not, can we prove actual intent to harm? So that is very important to keep in mind. It is difficult to get into the mind of another person and prove actual intent, and that is not a requirement of this particular law. Even if a student's behavior might be in some way related to that student's disability, if a student does something harmful that meets this criteria, it can be harassment, intimidation, or bullying, even if it's a manifestation of a student's disability. So that's another key part of our definition. Questions at all in a definition piece? Okay, next slide. Of course, when these issues are investigated, and not, this is not unique to Montclair, when these issues are investigated across the country, what often emerges is that there is a conflict going on between two or more students. And really, what you're looking for, as that part of, of the analysis goes, are students mutually engaged? Are they giving as good as they're, they're getting? We have unfortunately plenty of examples of incidents where one student has said something wildly inappropriate that clearly is harmful. Another student has responded and said something equally inappropriate and harmful. And we have a major issue when that occurs. We have code of conduct violations when that occurs. But that would be one example of mutual engagement, where you likely have a conflict and not two separate incidents of bullying that are going on. So when you're looking at these issues, often it's reported based on one incident at one moment in time, but what the investigation has to look at is context. What happened before? What happened after? What is the relationship between two students? And is this something that is primarily one-sided or fairly equal with those students? Next slide. So New Jersey also does say that we cannot retaliate against an individual for having made a report of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. And for obvious reasons, we don't want somebody to be fearful to make those reports. So we have seen examples where an individual knowingly made a false claim of harassment, intimidation, or bullying in order to harm another student. And that is also a violation of New Jersey's policy. And really, if you have that particular issue, the analysis is somewhat more straightforward. You're not looking at whether the issue caused substantial disruption. You're not looking at the specific harm. You're looking at whether somebody knowingly made a false claim in order to get another student in trouble. And that can violate the HIV policy as well. Next slide. New Jersey does now require for every single incident that the, that there be what's called a 338 form. That's simply the form that was developed by the New Jersey Department of Education that must be completed as part of launching any HIV investigation. So oftentimes, issues are launched because a parent brings an issue to the school district's attention. If a parent brings an issue to a staff member's attention, a parent is made aware that this form exists. The form is made available to the parent. However, the parent might not fill out the form. If that were to occur, now the staff member who spoke to the parent is completing the form. We cannot mandate that parents fill out our forms. If they're informing us about a potential HIV incident, the staff member would have to do that if this parent has not done so. There has to be a form for every case. If an issue later is appealed and it comes to you, part of the information you would receive would be those initial forms with the names of students redacted in those forms. So that has to be in place in every, every single case. Next slide. As I mentioned, we, we often do have issues that arise off of school grounds that could still be a form of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Many folks have heard of what's called portal-to-portal responsibility, when students are either going to school or from school back home, where there might be a potential harm to a student. And if a school district becomes aware of that, one student harmed another student while they were both walking home, that would be something where the district would have some responsibility to address that behavior. But I always tell folks when I talk about this issue that even though we have this portal-to-portal responsibility, you, our responsibilities often go well beyond portal-to-portal. Even if the student was home, even if it was on the weekend, even if it was on social media, if the incident causes substantial disruption in school, it can still be harassment, intimidation, or bullying, even if it occurred over the summer. It's possible that what happened in July or August could cause substantial disruption in September and could have that lasting impact. So we do need to be aware of that extended responsibility. Next slide. As I mentioned, issues sometimes happen over the summer that school officials might become aware of. I would say this, it's less likely that an issue that occurs over the summer will be harassment, intimidation, or bullying. And part of the reason is that if something happened a month ago, it's less likely that it's causing substantial disruption a month later, when students are back in school. But it's not impossible. Something could be so upsetting, could be so harmful, that the student's still being impacted, you know, days, weeks, or months later after the incident occurred. So school officials still do have a responsibility to address issues that we learn may have occurred over the summer. Next slide. Substantial disruption is complicated. Kids are complicated. So as we're, we're looking at these issues and trying to determine whether something had a lasting impact on a particular child, it's a very nuanced question. Sometimes the impact is obvious. As I said, a student is fearful to come to school. That's a pretty clear substantial disruption for a student. Sometimes it is more subtle. So part of what we always suggest districts think about is a series of questions in more complicated cases to determine, is there a change from baseline behavior? Did the student miss school? Did the student miss class? Is the student's academic performance suffering? Is the student not participating the way they were before in athletics or other extracurricular activities? Has the student's circle of friends changed? Are they withdrawn where they weren't before? Is the student using a different routine? Are they avoiding certain parts of the school or playground because they're so fearful of another student? So that is a more nuanced set of questions that we sometimes do need to go through to determine whether or not there was substantial disruption. And this slide and the next slide are just examples of some of those questions that could be considered in those more complicated cases. So, next slide. So we'll, we'll skip past this slide. There's again, just more examples of the types of questions that we may need to consider to determine substantial disruption. So of course, this process is very comprehensive. New Jersey has one of the more detailed harassment, intimidation, and bullying laws in the nation, and there's a very important role for the Board of Education. So let's go to our next slide. You have a number of important roles in this process. Of course, you're establishing board policy. You are ensuring that we have personnel in place that will, for example, be the anti-bullying specialist to do these investigations. Important that there be resources and training provided for staff members. You have an important role if a parent wants to have a hearing to contest the outcome of an investigation. You are required to vote as a Board of Education on all HIV investigation results. So there is a requirement for the board to vote to affirm, modify, or reject the conclusion that's reached. And the law is a little bit convoluted, the way it's written. In New Jersey, there is a requirement for the Board of Education to be informed of the outcome of an investigation at one board meeting, for a letter to go home to parents after the board has been informed, and for the board to then vote at a subsequent meeting, at the next meeting, to affirm, modify, or reject the results that are reached. And it's possible that, once the parent is informed in writing that you have been informed, the parent might ask for a hearing before the Board of Education. So it's possible that in addition to those two meetings, there's also a need for another meeting for that hearing with the board. Next slide. There are key timelines in this process, and it's always important to, to make sure that those are adhered to. When cases are appealed and make their way to the Commissioner of Education, the Commissioner is very concerned if the district is not following these procedural requirements that have to be met. So for example, a staff member who learns about a potential harassment, intimidation, or bullying has to report that issue to the school principal the same day. Now, usually we'll learn about these things during the typical school day, but it's possible we learn about something at a school dance at 10:00 PM. The law says it has to be reported to the principal that day, which means the clock is ticking, needs to be reported by midnight in order to make sure that within that next school day, the investigation can be initiated. Within 10 school days, the investigation is supposed to be completed. However, the law does recognize that sometimes there will be a need to amend a report at a later date. So for example, a student who was part of an alleged incident has been out sick and is unable to be interviewed. That would be a reason that the investigation is not yet completed. In a case like that, there would be a, an amendment to the report at a later date, and at that later date, the board would then vote to affirm, modify, or reject. So I did highlight, because the process is a little bit complicated, the need for the board to be informed at one meeting after the investigation is completed, and then to vote at a subsequent meeting on that issue. Next slide. So the HIV protocol review that we were asked to go through with the district really gave us a chance to talk with the key players in your district about the HIV process. So if we jump to our next slide. I had the pleasure and the opportunity to meet with all of your anti-bullying specialists, your school principals and assistant principals, your other administrators, your anti-bullying coordinator, your superintendent, to really talk through and to also examine your existing policies, protocols, and templates. And as part of this process, to offer some insights and recommendations that you may want to consider for moving forward. So we did develop a report for the district that was organized into three different parts. The first part had a series of recommendations around protocols related to reporting, investigation, and identification of incidents. The second part addressed a series of issues around school climate and bullying prevention. And the third part talked about what do we do once we do have a confirmed HIV incident, and some considerations around working with the students who are involved, aggressors and victims. And it's very important that we have an equal focus on, on both sides of that equation. Next slide. One of the things that we did, that I did highlight in our recommendations deals with a state requirement to report what are called bias-related acts. That is a mandate in our state law that if a, a student is targeting another student because of what we call a protected class, because of race, ethnicity, gender, religion, disability, and there really was discriminatory intent, that's the reason that one student did something to another student, targeted another student. New Jersey law does require that contact be made by the district to both local law enforcement and the county prosecutor's office. So part of what we looked at was making sure that those protocols are understood, are seamlessly and consistently implemented in the district to make sure those reports occur. Now I'll stress that when those reports occur, in the majority of cases where law enforcement is receiving that type of information, there is no launching of a criminal investigation. In the majority of cases, law enforcement is recognizing that this is an issue that's appropriately handled by the school district. In the majority of cases, there is no concern about a potential crime that was committed. But there is that mandate to make sure that the notice is provided at both levels, local law enforcement and county prosecutor's office. Next slide. And you see here the definition of what do we mean by a bias-related act. That's something that is directed at a person, group of persons, private property, or public property that's motivated in whole or part by racial, gender, disability, religious, sexual orientation, or ethnic prejudice. Statewide, that is probably about half of our bullying cases that would actually meet that definition of a bias-related act and require those reports to be made. It does not have to be something that rises to the level, or that you believe rises to the level of a crime. Next slide. So the state of New Jersey does have a memorandum of agreement between schools and law enforcement that spells this out. That memorandum of agreement was updated in December of 2023. So part of what school districts are allowed to consider on this issue is whether or not the student was actually motivated by discriminatory intent. Let's face it, sometimes students use language that we wish they wouldn't use. Sometimes they're repeating song lyrics. Sometimes they're using a term that they might have heard but don't understand. Sometimes they're misusing a term but not thinking about the harmful impact that it could have. So school districts do have the right and responsibility before jumping to make that report to law enforcement to determine that there truly was discriminatory intent. And that is different from the HIV analysis. You can have something that rises to the level of harassment, intimidation, or bullying, even if a student didn't intend that harm, but for the report to law enforcement, you do need that intent piece. And so it's less likely that a second grader is going to be found to have intent, because it's very possible that a student who's using certain words might not understand the impact of those words, or the meaning of those words. More likely that an 11th grader using the same language would have an understanding, and that it would be more likely to be something where there's discriminatory intent. So age is a factor that you look at, but there are lots of other factors in examining intent as well. Next slide. I'm highlighting this issue and, and putting it into, under real focus because the state of New Jersey has done that. When the memorandum of agreement was revised in 2023, our state attorney general also put out guidance and indicated that there is a responsibility under the New Jersey law against discrimination to make these reports. And if these reports are not made, a district could be violating the New Jersey law against discrimination, and the matter could be referred to the New Jersey Division on Civil Rights to investigate the failure to make those reports. So that was the, that was new, that guidance coming out from the state attorney general in December of 2023. And that sent a very strong signal that school districts across the state need to make sure that these particular reporting obligations are being met. Next slide. So we do have a series of recommendations that we have provided to the superintendent, and I'm just going to highlight a few of those for you that really directly talk about your role as a board. your role as a board. So one of the recommendations is that the first scheduled board meeting, following the completion of an investigation by the anti-bullying specialist, that the Board of Education be provided with a brief description of each HIB investigation that was completed since the last board meeting, including grade levels of students, the alleged characteristics that were involved, the nature of the incident, for example, was it in-person, virtual, physical, verbal? The conclusion that was reached by the anti-bullying specialist, that there be an opportunity, if you would like, in closed session, for you to ask any clarifying questions that you may have regarding that issue, and, you know, that the public understand that you're not yet acting on the issue, you're being made aware of the fact that the investigation has been completed. What New Jersey law then requires is that, within five days of you being informed, that a letter go home to the parents, informing the parents that you have been informed of the outcome of that investigation. So next slide. So one of the recommendations is to have a set of letters that help with transparency, help everybody to understand the process that we have to go through under New Jersey law. One of those letters would be a letter to the parents of the alleged aggressors and victims in any particular case, explaining that the Board has been informed of the outcome of the investigation, outlining the due process rights of the parents and students, including the right to a hearing before the Board of Education if a parent were to ask for it. The letter also would indicate when the matter is scheduled to be voted on, so the parent understands where we are in the process and when the Board would be scheduled to vote to affirm, modify, or reject. So it's really, there's a mandate for that letter. This provides some suggestions about items to include in that letter to make sure that parents have the information they need, understand their rights, understand the process and the timeline for these issues. Next slide. So as part of the recommendations, we also talk about establishing a protocol for conducting hearings. And of course, you have had to do hearings before, so you have protocols in place, but, you know, making sure that parents or guardians have the right to be present, to share any concerns that they may have with the process, with the outcome, that there be, you know, reasonable time for parents to present any issues they might have. But of course, this is a hearing for you to receive information. It wouldn't be something where there would be, you know, cross-examination of witnesses or anything like that taking place. We would also recommend providing parents to request a hearing with information to allow them to be prepared for that hearing. So that would include evidence gathered during the investigation, subject, of course, to appropriate redactions. We do need to look to protect confidentiality of other students, and there are personally identifying information, but otherwise sharing the information that was gathered. And if the parent of one party requests a hearing, it would also be permissible, it's not required under state law, but it would be permissible for the parent of the other party to be aware that there is a request for a hearing. So, you know, there's a parent asking for a hearing because they disagree with the outcome. There's likely another parent who agrees with the outcome of that investigation, and if there is a request for a hearing, it would be prudent to consider notifying the other parent as well, and providing the opportunity for that parent to share their view regarding the issue as well. Next slide. And then, at the next scheduled board meeting, after all of that takes place, the information is, again, presented to the Board for you to vote. And New Jersey law is quite specific that there is a requirement for the Board to vote to either affirm, modify. So one way you might modify, the report said that three students were guilty of bullying a particular student. You might conclude that there's sufficient evidence regarding two of those students, but not the third student. That could be a modification. Or you could reject the result that was reached. So there does need to be a clear vote. If the Board does determine that it needs to modify or reject a decision, part of what we recommend is that it would be prudent for there to be some clear rationale for that modification or that rejection, because now the district will need to be able to legally defend that position that has been taken. There would have been presumably a very detailed rationale for the anti-bullying specialist conclusion that was reached. If there's a different conclusion reached, you really want to have a good, clear rationale for any change to that outcome. Next slide. So that's a quick overview of some procedural issues, of the process that we went through in working with your wonderful team in the district, and some examples of the recommendations that we made. I'm happy to answer questions that you all might have.
If there's an incident where we don't necessarily know the perpetrator, like hateful graffiti, does that have to be investigated as an HIB? Does it have to be reported as a bias incident?
So you really do need to have reason, have an identifiable alleged student aggressor or adult staff member aggressor for the HIB investigation. However, what you described would be an example of a bias-related act that would still have to be reported, even though at that moment, you don't have reason to know one way or another if there's a student and an HIB issue. So there are other times when you have to fulfill that reporting obligation separate and apart from HIB.
And if we are potentially modifying or rejecting an HIB recommendation, I know when we vote on the resolution, that vote is taken in public, but the details generally are discussed in closed session. Would the determination and deliberation about rejecting, or adjusting, or amending take place in closed session, and the articulation of the reasons for doing so, would that all be in closed session?
Yes, because you still have an ongoing obligation to protect the confidentiality of the students involved, and it would, as a practical matter, in many cases, be impossible to provide that public rationale without revealing that sort of personally identifiable information involving students. But it is important that you have it, because the commissioner now has to consider why the district reached a different conclusion at the board level. And we did see a case this past year where the commissioner overturned a board that had overturned an anti-bullying specialist, because there was no clear rationale for why the Board overturned the outcome of the anti-bullying specialist investigation.
What does the parent have a right to know? So if, like, the school contacts them with, you know, with a HIB, and they're told very minimal details, like, what exactly do they have a right to know and ask questions?
Sure. There are various stages. So a great question about what the parent has a right to know. There are various stages of the process where the parent has different levels of rights. At the initial outset of an investigation, really, the parent is being advised that there is a potential issue, their child is an alleged aggressor or victim in that particular issue, you know, whether there was another student or a staff member allegedly involved in that issue. But it's very difficult to provide much more than that, because we really don't have any clear idea what the actual facts are at that stage of the process. And, you know, a big part of the initial notice is explaining the process that will be followed, since we don't yet know what actually occurred. So it's limited information. I know that can be frustrating, but we just don't have actual facts at that outset. If a parent asks for a hearing because they disagree with the outcome of an investigation, at that point in time, we do have some clear case law that says a parent has extensive rights to see the information that was gathered during that investigation, so they can understand how the conclusion was reached with appropriate redactions. So we would still be redacting personally identifiable information about other students, but the parent would have broad rights as part of that hearing, in advance of that hearing, to have the information gathered during that investigation. So different stages of the process, different levels of rights.
David, you mentioned the reporting of bias-related acts to law enforcement, if it does raise to that level. Could you speak more about what that means for the student? Is there a record that is being kept of these acts, or what does it mean when it's?
Sure. So it's a great question, and it does not mean that law enforcement, that there is a criminal report that has been filed. There's no allegation of a potential crime that the district is making. So there's nothing that requires that at this stage of the process. Really, it can be a fairly minimal notice that is provided unless law enforcement asks for additional information. So it's not something that is following the student, it's not part of their record that that notice was given, it's not public information that's available to others. It is a notice to law enforcement that if they choose to do a criminal investigation, they could request additional information, and they could launch a criminal investigation. That is not what happens in the vast majority of these cases. In the vast majority of the cases, law enforcement is deferring to the school district to handle it, because there is little or no reason to think there was actually a crime that was committed. But it is that notice to law enforcement where they could direct the district, for example, to stop their HIB investigation, and could say, while we are doing a criminal investigation, you know, you really need to step back so that there's no potential interference with our criminal investigation. So that has happened in some cases, and that could happen.
First of all, I really appreciate the presentation and the superintendent for doing this, because this has answered a bunch of questions that have been lingering for a long time. I gather from the recommendations that there are things that we need to do to improve our processes.
Yes. One thing I would stress is that, in looking at this, we're offering recommendations for best practices to most effectively adhere with the anti-bullying Bill of Rights. So nothing in our report is meant to be critical of existing staff members or things that have been done in the past. It's really trying to lay out a set of protocols so that all Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and you have, you know, the strongest approach to meeting that law.
But this, I don't recall seeing this 338 form before. Maybe it has been presented, I don't, didn't look at the number.
We've seen it before.
But is that done, is it, it's not, what you're saying, it must be done for each case to the full Board, not be done in committee?
Yes. Yeah, the Board of Education should be getting that information regarding the particular issues. Now, again, it's redacted information without student identifying information.
Yeah, and that is what you'll see, a change in our practice, is that these recommendations will be incorporated, that's why part of the training today.
That's really helpful.
Thank you.
Vaughn, you have a question?
I do have a question. Yes, I do. Listen, Ash, I was just wondering, you said that the parent can see the reports in preparation for their hearing. When you say "see," are you saying that they can have a physical copy, or they need to come to the office? Because I'm just trying to get some clarity on that.
Generally speaking, the parent, in that case, would have a right to a physical copy to those documents. Now, there is an exception, so every rule has an exception. If there was school district video footage that was relevant to a particular incident, federal and state law say the parent would have a right, with supervision, with the supervision of a staff member, likely an administrator, to review and see that video, but not to receive a copy, because very likely there are other identifiable students also in that video. And it's a balancing act to allow the parent to see relevant information, but also doing the best we can to protect privacy interests of other students. So that would be an exception where a process should allow a parent to come in, plan for that person to be supervised, and to be able to see video. But otherwise, generally speaking, with redactions, they would be seeing the information gathered.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had another question. Going back to the reporting to law enforcement.
Sure.
That privacy, as far as, is the information redacted in that case as well, what they receive, or they're getting the full?
Law enforcement's entitled to that information. Now, again, in most cases, we are not seeing law enforcement looking to act on that information because they're recognizing that it really is appropriately a school issue to be addressed. But they would have that right to that information if they so choose to investigate, you know, is there a potential bias-related crime, for example?
If we are making a report to law enforcement, are we also required, or is it, are we allowed to let the parents of the involved students know that we are required by law and are therefore making a referral?
You're certainly permitted to do that, and I think that my understanding is that would be the process that you would follow. It's not exactly, it's not a mandate, but it is a prudent process for the parent to be aware of that. So I hope this is helpful, and thank you for having me out. I know how complicated this role is. I should have mentioned, I did spend six years on a school board, so I appreciate how hard you all work to do this important work. So thank you so much for having me.
We're going to go to community partners. We'll start with the student rep. Wyatt, are you going to? I don't have anything.
Okay.
Wyatt, this is your first one. What's going on, Wyatt? I told people to tune in specifically for your thing, so there's going to be some disappointment. Okay. We can go to our other partners, MFEE.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. My name is Greg Foster. I am Board Co-Chair for MFEE. And first, I want to welcome Superintendent Turner to the district. Welcome. We really appreciate your transparency and looking forward to working with you, as the Board members. As you know, public education, a lot of challenges facing us, and whether at the national level, local level, we're here in Montclair to really help the school district kind of tackle some of these challenges. To that end, we've been very busy this summer. First of all, we actually hosted, over the summer, a program, a bilingual program for students in kindergarten through fifth grade, and the idea is that we really want to kind of help those students kind of take full advantage of the opportunities available in this district. And I think, more importantly, we actually had this program called, and please forgive my Spanish, so I'm going to please work with me, where we got this to Verano, and basically it was all 31 students. And each day, we was packed with activities, instruction in both English and Spanish. Additionally, we ran Matlíticos, a five-week summer math intensive for teens, middle school and high school. And the idea behind that was to really build the math endurance, to accelerate their learning in middle school in math, Algebra I, Algebra II, and geometry. We also, thanks to a grant from Rutgers University, we were working with the district to help students access healthy meals. We're actually hosting workshops August 26th to 28th at the Montclair YMCA, and, sorry, Montclair Public Library, and also at the Wally Choice Community Center, to help families apply for the free and reduced lunch school program, school lunch program. We'll also be sharing information regarding SNAP, which, of course, as you know, is a fairly funded program that provides food benefits to low-income families. And if you want to know more about that program and our role in supporting these families, please visit mfe.org. And families, when they come there, they can sign up for a free workshop or free appointment with us, and we'll work with them one-on-one. And lastly, our annual We want to look at kind of student social and emotional well-being and also look at, look at this as a professional development opportunity for teachers, for administrators throughout the district. So that said, we're really excited to kind of kick this year off with more grants. And again, I just want to reemphasize, working with the Board, working with you Superintendent Turner, and helping you guys kind of meet your goals and objectives for this year as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. MEA?
I want to begin by acknowledging Superintendent Turner and Interim Business Administrator Sullivan. Both began their roles on July 1st, long after this year's budget was crafted. They had no part in creating the deficit we now face. From the moment they uncovered the financial crisis, they have been open, honest, and transparent with the public, and for that, I want to thank them. That said, the numbers are staggering. An $11 million deficit for this current year and a structural deficit for fiscal year '27. These are not the result of sudden unforeseeable events, they are the result of years of budgetary decisions, inaccurate projections, and a lack of financial discipline and oversight. The current leadership did not create the problem, but it is the responsibility of this Board to explain how we got here, what was known, when was it known, and why no corrective action was taken sooner. The public deserves those answers before any decisions are made about how to address this shortfall. Over the past two years, I have invested more hours than I can count into understanding the Montclair Public School finances. I've spent late nights poring over budget documents, Board Secretary reports, Treasurer reports, bills lists, and transfer reports, often posted months late, sometimes incomplete, and usually in formats that had to be recreated line by line just to make sense of them. I've learned how each fund operates, how cash moves in and out, and how to spot the warning signs buried in the fine print. I've compared budget projections to actual results, tracked transfers, and followed money across accounts until the paper trail revealed the bigger picture. These weren't easy hours, they came at the expense of personal time, sleep, and moments with my family, but I knew that our members' jobs, our students' programs, and our community's trust depended on knowing the truth. The decisions made here in this room are not abstract. They determine whether a teacher can keep their classroom, whether a paraprofessional can pay their rent, whether a program that changes a student's life survives or disappears. Real people's lives are shaped by the choices you make in this room. In the weeks and months ahead, I imagine there will be several proposals addressing how to fix this deficit, but let me be clear, any plan must be fair, transparent, and grounded in facts, not fear. We will not accept a process that hides details, pits stakeholders against one another, or fails to examine the root cause of this crisis. The Board has, the Board now has an opportunity and an obligation to restore public trust. That start, that starts with the complete financial transparency. Make every relevant financial document and projection public. Clearly identify the decisions that contributed to this deficit. Commit to regular public updates that are honest about both the problems and the progress. The MEA is ready to work in good faith with the district's leadership to advocate for solutions that protect the quality of education and the people who deliver it every day. But cooperation requires honesty, and honesty requires full accountability, in particular from this Board and anyone else who had a role in steering us into this crisis. The MEA will continue to be a voice in this community, demanding solutions that protect students, retain staff, and rebuild trust. Our students, our staff, and our community deserve nothing less. With a new superintendent and business administrator, we now have an opportunity, but only if the Board chooses a new way of operating, one rooted in transparency, accountability, and early intervention. Thank you.
Montclair PTA? Online, all right.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we're hearing you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Turner and members of the Board of Education. My name is Linda Cowan, I'm the President of the Montclair PTA Council. Just briefly, I wanted to thank you for your work. PTA is committed to working collaboratively with the district in whatever capacity that we can to support our students and our families. We recognize that the significant budget challenges the district is facing and understand that difficult decisions lie ahead. As we move through this period of transition, including new policy rollouts such as the policy on digital device usage, PTA is ready to partner in communication outreach in helping our families adjust. We are also working internally to update our own technologies to better support our local PTAs so they can more effectively engage with and serve their families. In addition, we are looking to deepen and grow our working relationships with other community groups to ensure a more unified and comprehensive support system for all students. Above all, we see opportunities to strengthen inclusive, meaningful family engagement across the district. When families, educators, community partners, and leadership come together to share our varied perspectives and insights and allow for creative problem-solving and collaboration, all of our students will benefit. Thank you for your time and your continued partnership.
That is it for community partners. We're going to move to public comment. Start with Kalen Unsala. Yep, you go ahead. Come up first. Everyone, just as a heads up, everyone has three minutes for public comment. You don't have another thing? We'll give you, we'll give you a heads up as you, as you approach the three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kalen Kinsella, and I'm a staff member of Terrace Serendipity Cafe, also known as the Montclair Student Cafe Project, which received a large amount of funds from the Board of Education in 1995 to support its development in the wake of the post office murders and a carjacking that had taken place in Montclair. Terrace Serendipity Cafe fosters the local DIY music scene in Montclair, something important for students and community. Every summer, for decades, we've used the amphitheater as an outdoor venue with additional access to the auditorium building for power and restroom use. So this summer, we asked if we'd be able to use it for our shows, but we were told after our third request that it would be closed off for construction without providing a certain period when they'd be working on the space. So we asked, only then were we told that it would take place for the entire summer. In the end, there was no construction that took place in the area that we set up to perform in, and we lost many opportunities to use the space. I don't speak for the group in its entirety, but I can safely say that I was and still am disheartened. We've been putting on live shows and helping students express themselves through art for 30 years, yet we were told information that hasn't seemed to come to fruition, and we did not receive help to work out dates that could have worked, nor were we updated about anything having to do with the construction. This was especially disappointing, given that the Board helped start the Montclair Student Cafe Project with its original funding in the first place. I believe a solution would be more direct communication between the MSCP and the Board of Education so that scheduling and access can be coordinated in good faith, and we want to continue using this space to highlight the creativity, the fostering of the arts, and freedom of expression in Montclair that make our town so special, and I hope we can both work together to make that possible. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening, rest of your evening.
Thank you. Greg Foster?
Ed Karine? Karen? What's up?
Was to talk. Now can you hear me? So I'm Ed Karine, I'm the advisor to the Montclair Student Cafe Project, and it's, and it's my job to interface with the township government. And the way that normally works is I, I interface with the PRCA, with Michelle Camerata's group. And the reason for that is they have, they can give us permits to use the parks and the various places and so, and so, and they provide us with the liability insurance when we run our events. And so, so then, when we need something that's in a school, the PRCA people get in touch with the Board of Ed people, and the Board of Ed people get in touch with the school administration, and it's a pretty long process, but eventually, but it has been working. And, and this, this summer, it didn't work at all, so that's why, that's why we're here to talk about this, and, and I hope you can give us some kind of a procedure that will, a person to talk to or someone like that, so we can straighten out the communications and get permissions to use these places and continue doing our live music shows. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jim Beck?
Good evening, everyone, and I appreciate the opportunity to just share some of my concerns I have about Option 2 and its implementation within the school district. Option 2, you may or may not be aware, is an opportunity that the New York, New Jersey State Board of Ed provided to students to have learning outside of the classroom. It's a wonderful opportunity for students to take advantage of, of learning opportunities that the district may not be able to provide. The New Jersey, sorry, the Montclair High School MAID Program is a, is a great example of that. It's allows rising seniors, seniors to participate at Montclair State, take classes that are not available as part of that process. It's available to all students. When it comes to physical education, unfortunately, the district takes a somewhat exclusionary approach. Only certain students are eligible to take advantage of the Option 2 for physical education. In particular, only student athletes that have been participating in district sports can take advantage of Option 2. My concern here is that my son is a dedicated student, fiercely competitive, but his discipline is cycling, and this is something that's not recognized by the district. Nevertheless, he spends 15 hours a week to his craft and, and his competition. What I'd like the district to consider is allowing Option 2 to be applied uniformly across all students within the district, so those athletes who are participating, even if they're not in district sports, can then take advantage of Option 2. Specifically, what that means is, like, has been recognized for other student athletes, is that they can opt out of PE and then use that time for a study hall in order to really take advantage of that and to focus on their education. I too like my son to have that option. He spends a lot of time, you know, as other athletes do, honing his craft, honing his experience, and would, could well use the time during the school day in order to have a study hall to focus on his studies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it for in-person public comment. Is there anyone online? No? Okay, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. First item on the agenda or minutes, numbers one and two, anybody move, want to move that?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Ready for a vote? Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
Next item are pupil services. I believe we are tabling number three, so we vote on one to seven minus number three. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
Next are operations and school support services, items one to four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
Next are personnel items one to three. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Melon? Yes. Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
I believe at this point, we have a motion to go back into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
I believe at this point, we have a motion to go back into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
I believe at this point, we have a motion to go back into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
Next are personnel items one to three. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Melon? Yes. Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
I believe at this point, we have a motion to go back into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
I believe at this point, we have a motion to go back into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
I believe at this point, we have a motion to go back into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
Next are equity curriculum instruction, items one and two. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
Next are personnel items one to three. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Melon? Yes. Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
I believe at this point, we have a motion to go back into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Ryan Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
I believe at this point, we have a motion to go back into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
One more item on the agenda. We have pupil services number three. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Staying.
Brian Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yeah, she's still.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, sorry. We have announcement of future meeting dates. The next workshop meeting of the Montclair Board of Ed will be held on Wednesday, September 17th, at 6:30 PM in the George Innis Annex atrium located at 141 Park Street. The meeting may go into closed session until approximately 7:30, and then it will reopen to the public. Now, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Melanie Deisher?
Yes.
Jada Roman?
Yes.
Brian Fleischer?
Yes.
Holly Shaw?
Yes.
Eric Scherzer?
Yes.
Yvonne Buchnight?
Yes.
Monk Inyang?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.